You set this meeting up on time.
What's that? I'm sorry. I'm sure I'm missing any of those.
Yep.
What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was going.
Do you have issues downstairs?
No, not really. We just tried, usually she's downstairs and I won't be doing this. Alright, it is seven o'clock. We will call this meeting for Wednesday, January 4th to 2nd quarter. First order of business is the public hearing on the right-hand turn at Coed Sportswear. This is the third out of three public hearings that will report on the matter. As indicated in the first and second public meetings, the, uh, the plan or the proposal on the table is to strike the ordinance language in, what is it, 4?
404.
404?
404.1.
404.1, thank you, Chief. In section 404.1 prohibiting right turns for any vehicle out of Coed Sportswear, recognizing that other ordinance language will allow enforcement to prevent trucks from turning right out of Coed and down Pleasant Street. Any further comments from the board with respect to the proposed ordinance change? No? Anyone from the general public? No. Alright, with that, I will make a motion to accept the proposed change to the town ordinances as outlined in the prior three public hearings with respect to right-hand turns out of the Coed Sportswear on to Pleasant Street.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And as they passed, the ordinance is struck. Thank you very much. Alright, um, Sue. That's to budget and warrant articles.
Which one do you want to be first?
Well, why don't we cover the warrant articles without article one? Because we're gonna have to go over the budget line item article one. But why don't we go through those first and then we'll get the longer discussion.
Okay. Article two, I created this article, the language might change because the hour is putting together some language. But I think I forgot everything in the beginning, but it might change a little bit. So shall the town vote to raise an optional veterans tax credit under RSA 72218 and the amount of $500 to expand the eligibility requirements to include individuals who have not yet been discharged from service in the armed forces security requirement? So what happened was the government recently passed a law that allows military personnel to receive the veterans' credit while they're still in.
Still active?
Still active.
So it's an active-duty tax credit in a sense?
Exactly. So it's the same amount. It just includes those other individuals.
What's the difference between the two, the other and the all veterans?
So the standard veterans' tax credit is $50 off the tax bill. Towns that adopt the optional veterans' tax credit can choose an amount up to $750 and usually show $500. And we voted on that years ago at a town meeting. And then the, the next article, three, is the same thing, which is for the all veterans' tax credit. So years ago, in order to get the standard optional veterans' tax credit, you had to be in the military during a time of conflict or war to get the credit. The all veterans' tax credit comes to anyone who served in the military regardless of whether it was wartime or not. And now with this re-adoption, it will include the people, the members in Iran back there still. And that was a DRA proposal.
No, but what's the difference between the optional and the all? Can like a veteran reclaim the all?
No.
Okay.
So the optional veterans' tax credit, the key to that was you had to be in the service during a time of conflict. And they had outlined which conflicts applied. But the all veterans' tax credit, that's anyone who gets the credit all those other times when there was a conflict. Still the same amount, but now.
Basically, between these two, then, active-duty military and veterans will be eligible for the tax credit in Newfield for the amounts indicated.
Yes.
And will be compliant with the new IRS Act?
Right. They're eligible now for the all veterans and the optional. Just they didn't include that, those active-duty.
Right, they changed the eligibility to the active-duty. Yep.
So article four is for the fire truck. Shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the fire truck capital reserve fund previously established for future purchase of any fire truck? Should be funded by $50,000 from the December 31st, 2022 fund balance. No money to be raised for taxation. Is that good?
Any questions?
I haven't sent these in for review yet because I have to send in everything in the fall and I think that's until today. Okay, so five, and we can talk about, five. Shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $2,000 to be added to the fire department equipment capital reserve fund previously established? Security requirement, that's the standard. We're going to take that one from the unreserved fund balance.
I don't think so.
Only $1,000.
Any questions on five?
Number six, shall the town, shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $5,000 for the 175th town celebration festivities? Same as last year's award?
And that would just be for this year, right, after that?
Yes.
Wait a minute, when is the 175th?
It's the summer, right?
Next year.
Is it in the 20?
No, 24, 24. Same 24.
Alright, these are these storm waters. Number seven, shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $329,500 for the repair and improvement of the stormwater infrastructure on summer in Pleasant Streets? Should be funded by up to $155,900 in loans from the New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which may be forgiven, $100,000 from the December 31st, 2022 fund balance, and the remainder $73,600 from general taxation. Town vote discussed?
Yep.
Number eight is similar. Shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $31,200 for the construction of rain gardens at Town Hall and the Paul Memorial Library? To be funded by up to $8,700 in loans from the New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which may be forgiven, and $22,300 from the December 31st, 2022 fund balance.
Questions? Good for that, alright.
And then number nine, shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $18,000 for the purpose of mosquito control by Town Hall Larvicide Services? And then, shall the town vote to raise and incorporate the sum of $10,500 for the purpose of repairing the sidewalk and steps at Town Hall?
Any questions? Okay. I guess, now, um, do you want us to take formal votes on each of these, at least two through 10, for the indication? I didn't want to stop you while you were gone. Alright, then, this will be, I think, as you guys know, the, um, quite often there's an indication of whether the select board supports or opposes the matter. So, article two, the optional veterans' tax credit. All in support?
Aye.
Aye. Three aye. Article three, for the all veterans' tax credit language.
Aye.
Aye, three aye. Article four, $50,000 to be added to the fire truck capital reserve fund.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article five, $2,000 to be added to the fire department equipment capital reserve fund.
Aye.
Aye. Article six, $5,000 for the town celebration.
Aye.
Aye. Article seven, for the $329,500 for the repair improvement of the stormwater infrastructure on summer in Pleasant Street.
Aye.
Aye. Article eight, $31,200 for the rain gardens at Town Hall and the Paul Memorial Library.
Aye.
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 Nobody said this was easy. Article nine, $18,000 for the purpose of mosquito control through larvicide services? Anyone? Okay. I guess that's, we're not recommending that. And article 10, shall the town vote to raise and incorporate $10,000 for the purpose of repairing sidewalks at Town Hall?
Aye.
I'm okay with it if the town is, I'll say aye.
Yeah, I want to say no.
That's fine. Great, alright. So those are the articles two through 10. Now, let's go through article one, which is our article. It's pretty familiar. What number did you have?
Hold on a little bit.
Yeah, 23, again, I don't know exactly what number you have in versus what I have. That's why we've got to watch for it. So let's walk through each of the lines. If anybody has a change to suggest that we can look at, vote on, now's the time to do it. Alright, so let's start by the executive line for general. Anybody have any changes to the 168, 380 in that one?
No.
Alright, I think we're good with that. Elections and vital statistics. So, um, right now we have $4,000 in for elections, plus $1,200 for the vital stats, which means $2,000 of the requests for project preservation, correct? Okay, so we're at $5,200. We okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Financial administration, $27,470. Any changes? No? Alright, we're moving. Uh, leave-out, $21,450. Okay, alright. Legal expense, $12,000. Okay, okay. Personnel stays at zero. Planning and zoning, $13,850. You're good? Okay. General government buildings, $35,200. Again, I'll go back to what I had recommended before, which was $7,500 coming mainly out of repairs and maintenance, deferred maintenance. Our general government buildings are in decent shape. Not that I'd like to defer maintenance, but this year I'm looking for money wherever I can find it.
So what number did you recommend?
Uh, $35,200, uh, no, I'm sorry, that would be, sorry. I have to.
Yeah, $35,200.
No, no.
Oh, no, maybe $32,000.
Twenty, no. The 35,200.
Was your original?
Was the original, was it? I, I'm sorry.
We had $35,200 and then you dropped off the $10,000.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry.
$46,200 is what we had on the proposal.
Was $46,200 the proposal?
$46,200 was last year.
No, the, your budget was 35,200. The budget provided by you. Oh, no, uh, yes, it was 35,200. With $10,000 of that being repairs and maintenance. What I'm recommending is 27,700, which reduces the repairs and maintenance budget. Last year we spent about $2,200 in maintenance, leaving $2,500 in it. So year over year, we'd be doing comparable maintenance. Now, obviously, if the sidewalk money comes in, we're going to be spending more money on, on, on that particular. But, um, so my proposal is 27,700, which is 7,500 less than the number provided by Sue.
And I made a note that we might need to re-elect this, you know?
Uh, yes. We didn't do that.
We didn't do that.
You are correct.
Another thousand?
Sure. So I'll say 28,700 then, if that makes any sense.
Good, good.
You're good? Okay, great. So that number then is going to be 28,700. Thank you. Cemeteries. They've flatlined the budget for the last million years, $31,515. Any questions on that line?
Good.
Okay, great. Insurance, $38,475. We can do a whole lot on that. We good?
Yeah, we have very responsible insurance here.
Uh, what, versus last year, at $37,365?
Well, the actual.
$37,369. Oh, that's what we appropriated.
$45,000.
Oh.
$45,300.
Yeah, but this is, this is based on the numbers that we got from everybody, correct? The Timax and everybody else provided numbers from the insurance line.
Oh, I know, I'm going to, I think they mean it was on that COVID one, we're being something.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you for putting it that way, yes. That was the, that's what that was.
Yeah.
Yep, that was the difference. Yeah, so it's, it's basically slightly up over last year. Alright, so we're good with that. Advertising, flatline at $51,500. Okay, thank you. And then other general government, we're at $30,300. You know, those are mostly contracts, computer sports, avatar contracts, home logistics expenses, stuff like that. Any changes?
Good.
Okay, great. Okay. One down. Uh, next one up, um, so we adjusted the police last time to $679,828. Any further suggested changes that you guys have at this point? No? Ambulance, $5,100. We're alright? Fire at $173,538. They're all out. Uh, any suggested changes there?
Nope.
Good.
Uh, building inspection is $7,500. Why do you have $6,000 in there?
I have six.
I have six.
You have six in the proposal.
I have six.
Because the actuals were $7,343 last year. And again, we, I think the basis of that is that, um, Larrigan has the salary increase, you know, for the first one, 15 years, and so we raised, which raised the amount.
And I think we also talked about all the, wasn't there a lot of construction this year? Sure, wasn't that part of it, the increase in the fees?
It was, I think we were increasing revenue.
Yeah, the building inspection for the most part is just deferment salary and the numbers associated with that.
We have to pay the annuals.
I know, but this is, this is basically his base. His base payment. Is the $6,000 sufficient? I, again, the actuals last year were $7,300. $7,300.
I'm not sure what we need to say. And I don't have.
I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, I can't remember what he, what he adjusted to. Alright, let's defer that.
We could call, you should go call Donald.
To go call Donald?
Donald Jones.
Oh, Donald, no, it's tougher, right? Alright, we'll defer that for now. Uh, let's go on to, uh, emergency management. We lowered that from $17,200 to $14,700. Lowering the telecom budget there. So $14,700 is the number now. Alright, streets. So highways, streets. So the, the baseline that was provided by Brian Cliffside Road is, it was the 380,600. Last meeting I discussed, he raised that by $40,000, basically, uh, paving. $10,000 was needed for the salt for winter, um, which got it to $34,600, and then he added another $40,000 for increased paving. I'll put it on the table once again, again, looking for more money here because right now we're 13% increase here over here. I would defer the $40,000 in paving, and look for doing something, you know, increasing, if we really want to aggressively do more paving, then I would say just a warrant article next year to do that. I had a conversation with Brian about it. He understands exactly what's going on, he's a taxpayer in town. He, you know, he's fine with whatever the board decides. But I will, I will propose the $340,000 versus $380,000.
$340,000, you're right there.
The $340,600, yeah. We're moving to $40,000 for the increased paving that he added to the budget.
I'll see you.
Any comment?
I don't support that. I think it's only going to get more expensive, as we heard from Hepney increases because of the increase in the cost of oil. And, um, we've kind of, you know, seen with the water department how we had 10 years of deferred maintenance and then it came back on village and a 15% increase. So I don't think deferring paving and maintenance should continue. I know he said we've been behind and I really think we need to catch back up and get on a good schedule so that it's not going to be this big issue further down the road. So, you know, we all know oil prices are going down. So that $40,000 figure is not going to go away. And I don't think punting it to next year makes a whole lot of sense, to be honest.
Understood. I have no problem with it with one year. I, I think, I think that we, we know what needs to get done. Regardless of what happened with the water department for their deferral, I think that this is a, this is an easy one to put on as a warrant article for the town if we can't find a room in the budget next year to do it directly. I'd like to do it directly in the operating budget, I think that's where it belongs. But if need be, putting a warrant article next year for a much larger sum, I think, makes more sense. Again, I'm, I'm trying to keep volatility out of the tax rates. And, um, this is one of the few areas where we can find significant funds to, to basically do that. So that's why I'm proposing it. Are you still good with that, Bobby, or not?
Still, uh, oils, we've gone up and down, the biggest issue I see are is inflation. And theoretically, maybe we'll get back down to two or three points by this time next year. So we might be able to cover on that aspect.
Your lips to God's ears. It would make next year's budget easier. Alright, so then we'll go with the $340,600 for now. Obviously, this will get discussed at deliberate.
Mayor, you're taking out the, oh, just the 40 for the.
Yes, just the 40 that he added to, he added, he added $50,000 to last year's budget, $10,000 for the salt and winter stuff. Leave that in, took the 40 out that he requested for increased paving. We, again, I'm sure we'll discuss this more in the deliberate session and everyone can weigh in on it.
Well, that's $6,000 of Larry's, correct?
It is correct, okay, great. Then go with $6,000, one and a half, you find money. Great, so $6,000 for building inspection then?
Good.
For everybody? Uh, street lighting, not much we can do there, $8,000. Uh, recycling, waste collection numbers, we have $79,500 for solid waste, $37,500 for disposal, $66,000 for recycling, and $5,500 for the cleanup. Any changes there? Yeah.
We could do this for cleanup for a year.
We could.
At least $5,500.
I, I'm all for it, I know people.
Only one year?
I know. It's a fine idea. I will, I will make that recommendation. And, and anybody want to do that?
No, I don't. Is there any contracts that might get in the way of not doing it?
Of not doing it? No, it's at our, it's at the town's option to request them to do it. So we, we can do that, yeah, we absolutely can, we can do that. It's a great idea, I'm all for it.
Good job, Keisha.
Keisha! Saving money! Great. Saving money. Alright. Uh, so, uh, next up, pest control. So we, uh, we basically have zeroed it out, we put the $18,000 larvicide for the town on the warrant article. So that's where that sits.
So, and I, my understanding of this conversation was not about the, was not that we were going to zero out that line completely, that we were going to maintain what we had right now, but not add back in the spraying, which is where that other $1,700 was.
This 17.
Remember, we split it, so she had.
$17,000 for, it was 17, 18,000 for larvicide, right? Which is what we're putting through the warrant article, and there was another, last year it was like $17,000 for the spraying that we removed, right?
No, this, there, well, yes, there was the, this, we took out the spraying, but then we had the other things that they were doing.
The testing, $17,250 was for permitting with the law.
Right, so, but my understanding, I, maybe I misremembered. We weren't putting the spraying as a warrant article. We were taking all of the pest control out and putting that as a warrant article?
No, we're putting all the, take, take, all the mosquito control we took out, but we put the larvicide in, the not spraying portion as a warrant article, so the town can make a determination of it. It's basically similar to what we did several years ago, which was have the town determine whether they wanted the larvicide or not. The spraying was the huge controversial one that, you know, over the years, people just hate spraying Main Street, you know, I don't know if you're one of those or not, but, you know, that was the one, people came in and said, we need to stop spraying, which, over the years, we did. But this was, we were moving larvicide into a warrant article for the town to determine.
So then what did they do this year that we?
We larvicide, but we didn't spray. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know, we, we did larvicide down at the river. We only larvicide, they only did larvicide in, in the other parts of the town. They didn't do by the river.
So the warrant article is, so, is taking, is now asking, the warrant article is now about the larvicide in.
Yes.
And so, it appears as though we're trying, kind of phasing it out of the regular budget.
I, I, I wouldn't say we're phasing it out of the regular budget. I would say we are basically allowing the town to decide whether they want to put it in the operating budget for tax, again, it's a budget issue, right? In terms of, as a priority, if you guys want to put this back in the budget, great, we'll do that. Because it, again, it's looking for money here to basically take off the operating budget and giving the town the option to make a determination. I mean, look, if the town wants to do it, we're gonna, we're gonna spend the money and do it.
No, I understand it, just moving it to a. No, I understand it, just moving it to a warrant article and I would just want to make sure that the town knew what that larvaiding meant. It's like this conversation we just had.
Yep. Well, again, at deliberate session, I think that would be the key, key point to make sure that everyone's educated and informed on the matter.
We could make a note in the warrant article that explains it. The treatment of the, the.
Yeah, and we've done that in the past, haven't we?
The law's working on people.
Standing water.
It, it's, yeah, it's treating the standing water, right, in town. We'll go back and look at the language though, but we'll make sure that helps educate people. No, you're right about that. Yep.
Right, because I, you know, I was thinking, will that focus that, are we reappropriating that money to bring it back for the spraying on the river? So that's why.
Yep, no, we'll get, we'll put more detail language just to make sure people know, that's a great idea. Okay. Uh, health agencies. Last meeting, I made a proposal to zero out this line. Again, it's not that I don't think that these people do good work, but in this type of a budget environment, I'm reluctant to tax people and then spend their money when they, people can do it directly. I know that it's advantageous to the agencies we support. But again, looking for money and where I can find it. And this is one of the areas where I think it's advantageous to try to get my tax impact.
So are you making a motion on that?
I'm making a motion to zero that line. Do you want any?
I'll make a motion to drop that from 7,500 to 4,000. And I think it represents just the necessary function of the community to reach out to agencies that are helping those that are in need.
Do you agree with that?
You want to make it five? I don't want to cut any of it, to be honest.
No, I, I get it, look.
Inflation and everything else.
I'm not, I'm not his fantasy either, but.
I'll go to five if you want.
Meet you halfway, 45.
47.
You got it.
I got what I said in the matter because I'm still zeroing this. 47.50. Alright, that's where we sit then. Welfare, 4,000, I don't think we change that. You good with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, parks and rec, 2,600. Any changes there?
Good.
Yep. Library is the 72,622. This reflects the 5,000 that we added because of the need to get a new head librarian next year. Any other changes to that line?
No, I don't know if it says plus benefits. Were they, was, were they supposed to come back?
Yeah, they were supposed to come back, I haven't heard anything. I think it's going to be part of their discussion and negotiation, so. Again, if they get something by deliberate session, we can make a change there. But right now, I think we make a recommendation from the board of the 72,622. Uh, patriotic, 500. Good?
Yes.
Uh, celebration, 88.50.
Good.
Conservation is the 43.50 with the $5 in the whole going for other conservation. And then the bond payments are the 60,000 and the 77.95. 77.95. Alright, so. If my numbers are correct, Sue. We are now at 1,967,328.
Took away 6,540. Right, 6,540 is 50,500. Took away 27.50, 2,750. Right? I'm doing math the wrong way. And then select, what was that?
What's the spreadsheet for?
I know, you know, when I made a subtractive, no, that's right.
Now, you should be subtracting, no, yeah.
I don't know, you can say that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. 5,200, maybe this is 1,200. Sorry. I have, right now, 1,965, but I got to double check my numbers. 1,965. I forgot to minus the preservation money.
Oh, I forgot to minus, wait a minute, I hope it's above the break cleanup.
Yeah.
So we have 6,500 less in general government, 40 less in highways, 55 less for the spray cleanup, and 2,700, right?
I have a mistake here too.
Health and human services, is that what it was? Did I do that wrong? 27.50. And that brings us to 54,750 from the Jubilee.
Hold on one second. 47.50. Okay, so I have 1,958,728.
Did I get that?
Great. Great, 1,958,728.
Wait a minute. Oh, I'm looking at the ball, I'm sorry.
No, don't look at the ball. So. So this gets us year over year to a 7.7% increase, which I think in this environment is excellent. So I think this is a good budget to put before the deliberate session right now. I mean, granted, we're going to raise more money in warrant articles and the town has options to save the word or not. But I think this, I think this is a good work to get this number. Any other questions then about what we're going to put before the town?
No, sir.
No? Great. Then I'll make a motion that we, Article 1 then, will be, shall the town of Newfield raise appropriate operating budget not including appropriations by special warrants articles or other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be, is it 1,906?
1,906, 411.
Okay, 1,906, 411, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town of Newfield or by law. Or the governing body may hold a special meeting in accordance with RSA 401310 and 16 to take up the issue of revised operating budget. Select board recommends the $1,958,728 that's set forth on said budget. Okay? I'll make a motion to accept those amendments to Article 1. Going second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Great.
The default, if you just move through that?
Yeah, you want to go now?
My question then, it has to be followed by, so last year we budgeted 206, 206,800. And then this year it's 1,88,500? Did you look at 5,500?
Right, so that 5,500 you can take off, right?
So when you look at my default, I put minus 18,000, should we be going, doing that much, I guess?
What do you mean?
Should be the difference between last year's budget and what this year will cost us is really, it's kind of a.
You talking about solid waste particularly?
Yeah, she on the default budget, I subtracted 18,300 because the cost is less. My question is, should that even be in there?
No, 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 because solid waste collection, solid waste collection is a contracted amount. This, in the upcoming year.
79,500.
500, correct, that's a contracted amount.
Okay, so. I guess what I'm saying is, all these contracted amounts, add up to 188,500. For a default, we would go to what was last year's amount, 206,000.
But we're in a contract for next year. So that, that collection number should be 79,500, right?
Okay.
Because that's a contract.
So what about the?
Right, but since it was different last year and it was more, we spent more money in sanitation last year, then we will this year, it is a, the default budget is higher for those amounts.
Is the contractual amount less this year than last year with what we have for Stella, I mean, Waste Banister, TNL? The total, I'm looking at the total.
The total for collection? Will be less this year than last year.
Okay.
The total, the total amount spent last year will be more, was more than we will spend in 2023 for collection and disposal. Okay? But, solid waste collection this year is under contract for a fixed amount.
Okay.
So that number should read 79,500.
Okay, I mean, it shouldn't be reduced then?
It should not be reduced. No, no, because that's under contract.
So I need to add?
Yeah, the default budget should then go back up.
Okay, so that's what I added, 18.
The disposal amount though.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not under contract.
Okay, and that was 37.5?
No, no.
We spent 45,360.
Disposal was not 90,000, that's not right.
That was, this is last year's budget.
Yeah, no, 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 but what I'm saying is, I don't believe.
Who knows?
The 90,249, I think is too high for solid waste disposal, spent last year on solid waste disposal.
The whole, wait a minute, I see what happened.
What happened?
The numbers are moved down one cell. That 62,338 was recycling.
Oh.
Do you see?
Oh, yeah, you're correct.
So you have administration here.
Right. And collection, yeah, you have the numbers all popping up.
So administration should be recycling, you're absolutely.
Yep, good catch. So the disposal number was 92,49.
Right, so if we go back.
I mean, collection, collection was, collection was 92,49. It's going to be 79,500.
Alright.
Okay?
I got it, so the first one's recycling, 62,338 for last year's budget. 90,249 was the waste collection? And the waste disposal?
Was 48,714.
Right, is that a contracted amount?
Disposal is basically our tipping fees. It's a tipping fee, so it's a fair, it's under, it's a contractual amount, dollar per ton. So, you know, I would say the last year's number probably goes in there for default.
Okay.
We're going to do last, I'll just leave it in there for default.
And as aside, Jim Wager's.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so that clears that, so.
And the other items are just contractual obligations, supposed to be a little less collection. The fire department, that was for the stylists. And then the bond.
Bondage is changed, right, yeah.
There wasn't really any.
Okay.
So I'll change some of the.
So, yeah, so if you just clean up the sanitation number, we'll probably end up with, let's see, these two numbers change, so 134 to 139, 145. So we're going to add about 11,000 to your default. Surprising. Because she had 90 and 44, they should be 79 and 66. So it's.
Correct.
It's, it's basically 130, right, 130, 145 versus 134. So it's about $11,000 increase. Just for the default budget. Okay? But, you know, the, the total amount there is much higher. Oh, but you're going to take off the 5,500.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that, yeah, so we'll end up with a, so probably end up being 6,000 over default.
It's the default. Yeah, you can't, I mean, you can't, like, that's why I'm wondering, you can't go back and change the numbers for the, for, like, you can't change the, like, the sanitation numbers. Right, because this is the default budget, so this is the budget that we had last year. So you can't go in and change to match this upcoming budget.
Unless it's under contract.
Unless it's under contract.
Yeah. And that's why the only one we're really changing there is, is the 79,500 for solid waste collection. Right, it's going from the 90,000, 1,007,950.
Yeah.
But otherwise, and we're getting rid of the 5,500 because that's not under contract.
Yeah, but it's, because it's not, because it was voted on last year, it has to stay in the budget.
Oh, oh, part of the default, correct.
The whole is at the end, it's exactly what we had last year for our budget. That can't change. That's the default.
Well, lots of changes about the contractuals. Yeah, yeah.
5,500 to 8,000.
Okay.
Alright. We'll fix that.
Yeah, so you'll just change the default budget number in one article one, based on those changes. Okay, great. Alright, so, any other discussion about the budget in warrant articles? Alright, let's move on to other business in front of us. Alright. So you should have a local river management advisory committee nominee form. This is for the Rivers Management Protection Program, Bill Reserve is the nominee. Any questions or concerns about Bill's serving in this position for the town? I will make a motion to approve Bill Reserve as our nominee for local river advisory committee.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So, I'm not sure I signed that right, but maybe follow my lead. It said name, I printed my name, and then it said title, but it didn't have a signature, so I just did.
For a second.
Alright, next up, there are two deeds with no covenants. For, the, these are the fragments of lots that we voted to approve to transfer at a prior meeting down, because they're non-billable lots now by the federal track. I will make a motion to accept the two deeds before us for MAPS 101 Lot 31 and MAP 101 Lot 30.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next up, I have a notice, this is the poll license notice. Every year we have to file a notice or pass a notice for, under RSA 7223 dealing with our poll licenses. This is dealing with the disclosure and the access to information for poll licenses. Any questions about this notice? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor? Aye? Anything signed, put right there. And then, full license. Uh, we have an abatement form, oh, this was approved. This is one of the abatement for the P4 Lake inventory. We're just signing here. Uh, we have an abatement form, uh, oh, this is approved, this is one of the abatement for the, uh, P four lake, uh, inventory, uh, we're just signing here. So, uh, next up, we have a Lila Drive abatement. So, um, there's several things going on with Lila, one is an abatement, and then there's three other parcels coming out of public, uh, current use. The abatement is for one of the parcels on, um, Lila Lane, um, which asked for an abatement from three hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. That adjustment is supported by our assessor, Rod Wood, noting the prior, uh, other comparable transactions, um, you can look through that. But he is recommending approval of the abatement from three hundred fifty thousand to twenty thousand.
Two hundred.
What's that?
Two hundred.
Two, two hundred, I'm sorry, yes, yes, two hundred, sorry. Thank you.
There was probably almost thirty-five thousand, the bill will be twenty.
Twenty thousand.
Which is ten percent of their amount.
Yeah. Any questions about that?
I didn't know anything, oh, okay. No.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, abatement request recommended by Rod Wood.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Abatement.
Do you, should we print our name on it?
I, it just said signatures, that's why I just love my signature. Uh, print it, print it, you know what, I'll go to see. That's why I was having it about, I was just saying, it, it looks like six, looks like six, like, more signatures, right?
Yeah.
All right, next up, um, there are three basically very similar, um, changes in land use, uh, change tax, uh, three parcels that are being pulled, pulled out of current use. One, these are all on Lila Lane, uh, Lila Drive, on Lila Drive, uh, one is four point one acres, um, map two oh eight, lot fifteen dash two. Uh, map two oh eight dot fifteen dot three, which is five point six five acres, and two oh eight fifteen dot four, fifty dash four, which is three point one acres. So these three parcels are to be taken out of current use. The, uh, land use change tax due on each of these would be twenty thousand each, as on page two.
Just on the bottom of it, please.
Yeah. Any questions? No? I'll make a motion to approve the land use change tax bill for these three parcels. Second by Hoby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. All right, this one is actually. Here. Not three things, there's two places to sign on each, I'm not sure you do both. So excited, government action. Excellent. All right. Next up, we have, um, two veterans' tax credit applications. All right, if you want to take a look at those, any questions?
So if there are two veterans living in a house, both reclaim the credit?
Both reclaiming, I have the same question earlier. Um, did, correctly, Mark, there's two places to sign on this. Unless this is a certificate. Yeah, it looks like a copy. Yeah, it is, it's a copy. Any questions?
Yep.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the veterans', uh, tax credits.
Thank you.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. All right, we're almost done. So, the last item, uh, is a memo from Chris Griffith, the chairman of the Conservation Commission. Uh, several items, um, one is noting, um, Josh Watson's name needs to be put back onto the website, which it, it is done. Allison Watts would like to rejoin the Conservation Commission, and there is a, um, appointment here. I think everyone knows Allison and her work, um, I would certainly highly recommend her to the Conservation Commission. Any questions about that nomination?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to nominate, uh, put Allison Watts onto the Conservation Commission. Second by Hoby, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then, um, Celta's asked us to nominate two residents to go on the Piscata, Piscata Greenway Management and Fire Committee. Um, the Conservation Commission is recommending Lauren, Helen, Allison Watts to represent the town. Any questions or concerns about that? Uh, great, then, uh, we'll, uh, tell the Conservation Commission to go ahead and push them on to that committee. Great. And then. Our meeting minutes, two of them, November twenty-ninth and December twelfth. Um, do you guys want to do these now, you want to push them to the next meeting, as we're venue at a certain time?
I'd always like to venue.
Do you want to venue, I, I'm more than happy, sure, let's do it, take five minutes. You guys all set? Any suggestions, Ed, this can be do with the two? Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, meeting minutes for Monday, uh, December twelfth and Tuesday, November twenty-ninth.
Yeah, but today they're hanging on the road to Mass.
Um, I believe they, um, I think Chief actually contacted Eversource about that, either he did or Brian did, I can't remember which one asked me about it. Uh, I think Eversource is gonna, because it's kind of in the right of way, well, I don't know what the status of that is.
Yeah, the state took that, that one, we had down in front of us, because no, Eversource didn't want anything to do with it.
So the tree, I mean, one of the problems is the, the first tree on the left, that thing's basically dying.
Yeah, it's, it's got a huge.
And I don't, I think Eversource is, is, hasn't done anything about it, um, but that's not ours, not in our land. So that's gonna have to be something between sellers and Eversource to deal with, because it's their, their land, their, states, uh, states right away.
It's just threatening here.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'll, I'll ask Brian about it, um, as well. So just to, um, so everybody's, um, knows, um, our town budget hearing is next Tuesday at ten. Um, that's a presentation of the budget, that's not the deliberative session where the changes get made, or just presenting the budget to the town. The deliberative session is February seventh, that's where changes can be made to any of the warrant articles itself. And then, um, the town election, which is when this will pass, or not pass, will be on March fourteenth for town election. Um, I think you guys all have the calendar, so just keep that in mind for work, for upcoming schedule. All right?
I'm good.
So our next, uh, town we're gonna meet, next Tuesday, budget time, huh?
Roger, yeah.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to, um, go into non-public under two E.
Two E? Pending claims or litigation?
Yes.
Uh, sure, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, great. So we're gonna go into non-public, it is at eight oh four.
Which one was it, I'm sorry?
Uh, two, uh, ninety-one, eighty-three, uh, two E.
Thank you. Can we just stop this, right?
Yeah, please, thank you. Um, and, uh, actually unplug that little box.
Unplug?
The, the power, take the power out.